Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, October 22, 2024, and this is a regular meeting at the City of Asbury Park Zoning Board of the Jessmick. Chairman Avellani, can you please call this meeting to order?
I'd be happy to. This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coaster and Asbury Park Press by publication of the annual meeting notice and posted on municipal bulletin board and municipal website. All notices are filed with the Board Secretary. Official action may be taken on the following matters before this Board, and this meeting is being recorded by AP-TV. Roll call.
Wendy Glassman.
Here.
Daniel Harris is currently absent. Russell Lewis.
Here.
Natalie Passerini is absent. Jill Potter.
Here.
Tim Slick.
Here.
Vice Chair Scully.
Here.
Chairman Avellani.
Here. All right, so we have 1206 Comstock, an application that came before us actually six years ago. Not the same owner, but a lot of the same people, with the exception of Mr. LaRotta. But maybe somebody could explain exactly what we'll be doing with this particular application today.
First, let me tell you that we do have jurisdiction. The notice is in proper form, so we can proceed this evening.
I appreciate that, Jack. Thank you.
When I swear in the witness, the applicant, I'll swear in our staff.
Yes.
Okay. And there's no, I sent everybody the resolution of the prior approval, so you could do a comparative analysis between that and this. And from what I saw from a legal perspective, there's only one or two subtle differences between the variance application last time and this time, except there's no D4 variance any longer needed. And there was one less variance for the location of any auxiliary power units or HVAC, no longer is located within setbacks. So those two items are not needed this time around. The rear and front yard setbacks were quite similar, and there was a slight increase in lot coverage.
Maximum building coverage.
Maximum building coverage. Other than that, there's a different, the house is different, but from a legal perspective, that's all I saw. So I've spoken to Mr. Hirsch, told him unless the Board members want a lot more detail, I told him he could put his case in and give us the abridged version, unless it's required to go in more depth as we proceed.
Thank you, Jack.
Okay, so with that, I guess I could swear in some witnesses.
You want to swear in all the proposed witnesses?
No, I'll swear there, yours and individually, yeah, one at a time. Sir, please raise your right hand. So I'm going to swear affirm the testimony about giving this matter to you, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, sir.
Please state your name for the record and spell it.
John Buletza, B-U-L-E-T-Z-A.
All right. And my staff members, would you please raise your right hands? You're swearing affirm the testimony about giving this matter to you, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Okay, please state your names and your affiliation with the Board.
Michael Sullivan, Clark Caden Hints, Board Planner.
Thank you.
Jerry Frieda, Board Consultant.
Thanks, Mr. Hirsch. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Good to see you again.
Same here.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thomas J. Hirsch, representing the applicant. As you've already covered in the beginning, I was the attorney that represented the applicant. There's a few of you that might remember that were on the Board then, I don't know, back in 2018. And this application is, other than the design, if you will, the house, very similar. As the Board, I think, is aware just by seeing the basic application, it's an undersized lot, although it meets the lot width, the biggest problem is depth. And so any variances as in a prior application really are driven by the fact that it only has a 55-foot depth. So if you met all the setbacks, you literally have no building envelope. There isn't the lap of the garage, quite frankly, on the property right now, which is naturally going to be demolished as part of any approval. It's also why there is a slight increase in building coverage. We meet, prior when we were here, you had a FAR regulation, which was violated, it was a D4 variance. Your ordinance has changed to get rid of FAR and create lot coverage. We are almost 15% under the permitted lot coverage, which more than we believe offsets any slight increase in the building coverage. We have the two parking spaces required on the lot. There is variance for one of the cars slightly will be in front of the house under park lengthwise on the driveway. The rear yard setbacks are the same as the prior application, and Mr. Buletza will cover that. So we believe, and we meet minimum side yard and the combined side yard setbacks. So even with this small lot, you can see most of the bulk requirements we're still able to comply with, be very close to complying with. And we did get rid of that setback for the air conditioning unit, which was 4.5 variance before, we now meet it. So that's where our starting point is. Mr. Buletza, you can sworn. Give the Board your credentials.
Yes, good evening, everybody. I'm John Buletza. I was the engineer and the planner for the previous application with Serum Nordstrom that was approved in, I believe, around 2019. I am a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, and also a certified municipal engineer, Vice President Nelson Engineering Associates, Inc., about a mile down the road.
Are your licenses in good standing?
Yes, it is.
Your license?
Yes.
So if you were licensed then, we've accepted you then.
Okay.
I think we should accept you now.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Buletza will be supplying the engineering testimony. We do have Ms. Kafona also to testify as a professional planner in the case. All right, I want you to go through the site. You can see on those boards, we'll change them for John's testimony. That's the proposed, this is all part of your file, of course, the proposed house rendering and picture of the lot as it exists with the garage.
Okay. Proposed house would be A1?
That's on the part of your, yeah, the part of the file. Yes, A1 and A2.
Yeah, we'll make A1, A2.
Okay.
Do you want me to mark them?
Sure.
And then we'll take those down so John can get to his engineering aspect, which is not that lengthy, there's not a lot of engineering here, with all due respect.
We have a theory, this is the training and utility plan sheet number four in your packet of my plans.
And that's part of A1?
Is part of the site plans.
Okay, so we'll make that A3?
A3.
Okay.
Property is located on the east side of Comstock Street, between Fourth Avenue and Fifth Avenue. It's also located on the corner of an alley to the south of the subject property. Comstock Street has 60-foot pavement with 36, sorry, 60-foot right-of-way, 36-foot pavement with curb and sidewalk outside, with 20-foot wide alley right-of-way, 20-foot wide right-of-way, with 15 feet of paved surface in alleyway. Property is on this 1206 Comstock Street, it's block 205 lot 11. It measures 50 feet east-west and 55 feet in the north-south direction. It contains 2,750 square feet. Property is located in the R1 single-family residential zone district, subject to the requirements of the R1 zone. The lot is undersized for the zone and a variance condition exists for the lot itself, that being it contains 2,750 square feet, and the minimum lot size in the R1 zone is 5,000 square feet. The existing development on the property, which you can see in your packet on page number two, the demolition plan, there's a 404-square-foot, one-story garage on the property, which by the way is a nonpermitted principal use in the zone. And there's also a bulk variance for that garage. The garage, the northern, the setback to the eastern rear property line is 2.5 feet, where the rear property minimum setback is 25 feet. Now, the proposed development on the property, the proposed site improvements are to construct a 2,683-square-feet, four-bedroom, 2.5-story, single-family residence on a crawl space that has a footprint of 1,143 square feet. The proposed dwelling has a covered front porch, has steps out to Comstock Street with a walk. It has, we're demolishing some chain link fences, proposing some nice vinyl picket fences and some solid fences and gates. We're also proposing a ribbon driveway with a concrete apron and a depressed curb on Comstock Street, as well as replacing the existing sidewalk with new concrete to make it a continuous new concrete surface for the concrete apron, and that will provide parking for two vehicles on the property, two off-street parking spaces, as well as vehicular access onto Comstock Street. Municipal utilities, sewer, water, electric are available in the public right-of-ways. Now, several bulk variances are required for the proposed development on the property as follows. As previously mentioned, minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet in the zone, applicant is, and the lot exists at 2,750 square feet. A six-foot front setback is proposed from the dwelling to the Comstock Street right-of-way, where 25 feet is proposed. In addition, a bay window that projects from the proposed residence is a 3.8-foot setback to the right-of-way line of Comstock Street. We're proposing a 3.3-foot rear setback from the rear of the proposed residence to the eastern property line, adjacent to lot number 23, where 25 feet is the minimum required in the zone. And I may add that that 3.3-foot side setback is actually an improvement over the 2.5-foot setback that uses the garage has to that same property line in that same location.
And the three-foot, that was, what was approved in the first application, that was a variance granted in that application?
Yes, 3.3 feet is now proposed, and 3.0 feet, less than that, was actually approved during the previous application.
And how does that rear yard setback match up with the, I guess, the only home on that block to the north in the next block?
They had just popped in before I answered Mr. Hirsch's question, one last thing. A design waiver is, those were all the variances, and a design waiver is also required for parking in the front yard. So to Tom's question, now although the applicant, there was no way to meet the front and rear setbacks on this lot because, as Tom had stated, the 25-foot rear setback from the eastern property line and toward the west, the 25-foot front setback from Comstock Street, those two lot, those two minimum setbacks lines meet in the middle of the lot, thereby creating no available building envelope for any type of a structure. So the applicant took some design considerations into account because he could not meet the front and rear setback lines, but that was due to the unique size and shape of the lot. However, he designed the proposed residence and the site improvements in such a way as so as to not create any crowding or any substantial detriment to the adjacent properties and to the structure.
I'm very sorry to interrupt you, sir. I'm just trying to determine if we have copies of that document that you're going over. It's not in my electronic.
This is the second.
It's not, yeah, I'm in the electronic, yeah, I'm in the electronic version. Do we have an extra, or can I just look at someone?
Do I have it?
It's in there.
Next one.
Isn't that the variance plan?
That's the one.
Yeah.
Sure.
Sure.
Okay. I'm referring to sheet.
I am on it now, thank you. So sorry to interrupt.
So you could see the setbacks that we were talking about on sheet number three, and you can see the setback from the existing garage on the property on the demolition plan on sheet number two. So as I was saying, the applicant has designed the site improvement so as not to create any crowding or any substantial detriment to the adjacent properties. And I'll start with what he has done with the rear yard. If you notice on the adjacent lot 24 to the north, this setback to the rear property line, that's the eastern property line that extended, is approximately 3.3 feet, or, sorry, 3.5 feet, and our rear setback is approximately 3.3 feet to that same property line, maintaining that certain type of offset to the rear property line along that northern line. In addition, that 3.3-foot setback is directly adjacent to a garage building on lot number 23. So it does not, so the variance condition does not really directly impact any other residents in their rear yard setback, only that adjacent detached garage on lot 23. So that was one way he mitigated any substantial detriment to the adjacent property. Now, as far as with the rear yard, now let's take a look at the side yard setbacks. So both of the, one side yard setback of six feet minimum is met, and that is towards the south, towards the alleyway right-of-way line, six feet required and six feet provided. And the aggregate, well, let me stay on that side. So the six-foot side yard setback to the south also has the advantage that a 20-foot wide alley right-of-way, in addition to that six feet, has visual distance from the proposed residence to the house that's located on block 204, block one to the south. Now, as far as the aggregate, both side yard combined setback, that's 14 feet. The applicant has been able to meet that, plus an extra 10.7 feet, such that the aggregate proposed side yard setback of 14.7 feet, sorry, 14 feet is required and 24.7 feet has been provided. In addition, we're now looking at the northern property line. As I stated, 18.7 feet to the northern property line, where eight feet is required, 18.7 feet is provided, plus there is an additional 22 feet to the house to the north on lot 34, thereby creating a separation of 40.7 feet between the proposed residence and existing lot residents on lot 24 to the north. As far as the front yard mitigation goes, Comstock Street has a 60-foot wide right-of-way, and in addition to, there were six feet to the front of the building, Comstock Street provides additional 60 feet separation from any residents across the Comstock Street to the west. So one last way that the applicant has considered to design was impervious lot coverage. Impervious lot coverage, as we had stated, the applicant is over the permitted building coverage, however, as far as maximum lot coverage, which is 65% in the R1 zone, the applicant is proposing a lot coverage, total impervious coverage of approximately 50.6%, which is 14.4% below the minimum requirement. In addition, the project, after demolishing the 404-square-foot, one-story garage, adding new residents and the ribbon-style parking, he has added less than 1,000 square feet of net impervious area to the site. Thereby, this development does not even meet the, what's called the minor development threshold of the stormwater maintenance of Casbury Court City. In addition, there will be no increase of stormwater runoff to any of the adjacent properties, while stormwater is proposed to flow towards the paved surface of the alley and the paved surface of Comstock Street via overland flow. The engineer, Mr. Frieda, in his letter has asked that we do some minor roof drains with a pop-up emitter and submit pre and post development conjurgraps with runoff amounts in his letter, and the applicant will comply with all of the engineering comments in Mr. Frieda's letter. One last note, and then I'm finished with my narrative, is that there is a design waiver for parking in the front yard, as we had mentioned. In general, the standard for a design waiver, as many of you may know, is to show hardship or practical difficulty and to demonstrate that the waiver request is reasonable, follows the intent of the municipal ordinance, and the standard for relief of a design waiver per the MLUL Section 40-55D-51B is that the Board may grant a design waiver, quote, "If the legal, if the literal enforcement of one or more provisions of the ordinance is impracticable or will exact undue hardship because of peculiar conditions pertaining to the land in question," which we have described as an undersized lot for the zone.
Thank you, Jim. That's all I have of this witness question.
Mr. Buletza, did you consider making the front porch the full extent of the house?
Yes, the architect will go into more detail on that, as far as inside the footprint. I mostly work with from the footprint out, and the architect, Mr. Pietro, will talk about the from the footprint in.
Okay. You mentioned a crawl space.
Yes.
This is going to be built on a crawl space.
Correct.
What is the, what is the depth of that crawl space, and how do you access that?
So the reason why it is on a crawl space is because we did a soil boring on the lot, which I actually have a copy of here, and it was found at the seasonal, the ground surface elevation at the soil boring is 1022. Seasonal high water table is at 97.9, and therefore the depth of the seasonal high water table below the ground surface is approximately 4.3 feet. So we recommended that the lowest doorstep of the crawl space would be at 99.9 to provide two-foot separation between the seasonal high water table and the top of the crawl space slat. That's why it's on a crawl space rather than, you know, basement. And Mr., sorry, Pietro will go more into depth about the crawl space entry, entry point.
Thank you. Regarding the driveway, if we look at the plans from front to back, so you have 20 feet, and then you have a six-foot swinging gate, and then another 20 feet. What's the swing on that, on that six-foot gate? How much of that 20 feet in the front is that gate taking up?
It looks like by scale, approximately five feet each side.
So that's leaving.
So when you swing them open, you have a 10-foot clear opening for the car to drive through.
So that's leaving 10 feet, or that's leaving 15 feet for the car to be parked, as opposed to 18?
Oh, we're showing the gates swing out. So when the car, the gates bisect the ribbon driveways.
Right.
There's 20 feet on either side of the gate.
Right, but if you're parking a car in that front, the front 20 feet.
Front 20 feet.
You have to leave five feet for those gates to swing, so you're only at 15 feet to park the car.
Right.
Correct? Okay. And then why didn't you have the driveway go back further, another, it looks like you got approximately seven feet to go back?
Well, we wanted to leave a little green area for maybe a garden. You may recall the prior applicant wanted to put a small garden there, leave some green space after the cars were parked, maybe a little bit of outdoor area that they could use, rather than just running the driveway all the way back to the rear property line.
If you did that, though, would you still need the variance to park the car in the front yard? If you ran it back to that seven feet and took away the five feet swing from the gate, that gives you 12 feet?
We would be able to, we'd be able to move it such that the parked car would be beyond the front of the dwelling, but it would be out of the minimum front yard setback. So I don't know if that would still.
But it would, but it would lessen, but it would lessen the effect of parking that car in the front yard?
Yes, it would.
By 12 feet?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Please, Harry.
Yeah, we briefly discussed the concreting, and the way it's proposed on the plan is concrete from the curb back to the front of the sidewalk, and then they have ribbon go all the rest of the way. I don't recommend that at all because, you know, pedestrians, people traveling along the road, you don't want the ribbons through the sidewalk area. I would recommend that they have entire concrete apron, which is probably six-foot thick, six inches thick with welded wire fabric, holds up a lot better to the car traffic, doesn't pose a problem for pedestrians walking up the street. So if that's a new improvement, it's pretty good.
To the property line?
To the property line, or at least to the back of the sidewalk.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
If the Board will get it. The rest of, the testimony was accurate, and I would agree with what was first said.
Sorry, just another question on the driveway.
Yes, sir.
What's the purpose of the six-foot gate? If you have two cars that you're parking in that 40-foot section, what's the purpose of the six-foot gate?
The gate in between the two parking spaces is, in order to be able to, it's to be able to.
Stop, stop. Wait one second.
I'm sorry, I can't turn it.
Just turn it off.
I'm fine, I'm fine. Sorry.
Sorry, do you want me to repeat the question, or?
No.
Okay.
We bisected the two parking spaces with the gate such that if they had one vehicle and they wanted to keep it blocked from the view on the street, they'd be able to open the gates, pull the car into the eastern spot, and shut the gates, and have a little limitation of the view of the car from the street. Then if they wanted to park two cars, they could park another one outside of the gate without having to open the gate.
Okay. Well, my concern with that, and I understand what you're Well, my concern with that, and I understand what you're saying, one, it's a picket fence, so you're still going to see the car. My concern is that, is that that gate is going to be used as a backyard, and now another car is going to be parked on the street, and we're going to have to deal with another spot. But thank you for your answer.
Could you not do a, like a sliding gate?
It just seems strange.
But that, that was the thinking behind that.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions for Mr. Buletza?
If I could just expand on that, would you guys give us some assurance that the car, the driveway as proposed would be used for two cars to park? You know, many times I've brought up, maybe you have two spots, you only use one. So, I think that's the concern. So, if you can give us some kind of assurance that that will be the case, I think that would be helpful.
Well, we'll represent it. That's why we wanted to make sure it was variance-free, we meet the two-car parking requirement, which indicated we did, and that's the intent. I mean, we can put the applicant on to verify that, but yes, the representation would be two cars are going to park in that driveway, which was our intent to avoid a variance, and that's the intent how it would be used.
If, and sorry to keep beating this dead horse, if you, if you, if you moved that driveway further back to seven feet, would you move the gate back seven feet as well? If you ran the driveway all the way back?
Yes.
Would that be a consideration? I, I need to take a five-minute recess so that we can...
Yes, sir.
So, I'll make a motion to take a five-minute recess.
Sure.
Second.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair.
If everybody is ready, I'll take roll call. Wendy Glassman, Daniel Harris, Russell Lewis.
Here.
Natalie Pastorene is absent, Jill Potter.
Here.
Tim Slick.
Not here.
Vice Chair Scully.
Here.
And Chairman Avaloni.
Here.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, Dan can participate in the discussion going forward.
He won't be able to vote, I understand, because he's missed, he's missed half an hour of the...
That's okay. His input certainly is appreciated.
Yeah. All right, where were we? I'm sorry, Mr. Scully, you were talking with Mr. Buletza. I guess my, my, my point was, if you ran the driveway back the other seven feet, there'd be considerations to move the gate back the seven feet as well, thus reducing the impact of that variance for the car in the front yard by 12 feet. I think the best question is, would you consider eliminating the gate?
Eliminating the gate?
Yes, it, it doesn't seem like it's necessary.
Oh, okay.
I think we'd have to check, you know, the engineered and designed, you know, that part of the plan, so.
But it's not critical to the application, so...
I, I can't speak to their...
I, I understand, Mr. Hirsch. I think that's what Mr. Scully was getting at, in the long...
So, look, let me give you an opportunity to discuss it with the client. We'll give you an opportunity to discuss it with the client at some point, so John's concerns can be addressed.
We'll obviously increase lot coverage somewhat by extending the driveway back, but I think we're, I don't have the calculation, but we'll still be under, I believe, because we're like 14.6 something. 14.6 something percent less on lot, impervious lot coverage.
21 square feet extended.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so that, that gate across there, we're showing that as a proposed six-foot-high open picket fence across there.
It's higher than the rest of the fence, you're saying?
So, it's higher than the fence coming around the front yard, but there's a six-foot solid fence to the north, adjacent to lot 104. There goes six-foot-high solid fence along the northern and eastern property lines, and then together with those four, four high picket fence along the alley and Comstock Street. So, there's different types. So, that fence in question... I think the bottom line is, if, if concerned for the board, they'll remove the gate. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Hirsch. Yeah, I think it's to remove the gate and also...
We're here to see what input we have from the board. You know, that's how they came up with the design, they thought it looked nice.
I understand. I think it would be to remove the gate and also extend the driveway. I think you're still under the, as Jerry said, I think you're still under the impervious coverage, and that would reduce the impact.
That's why we're here, to try to work with the board when you have comments about concerns you might have.
Yeah, we're going to be very, very slightly under, but we should still be under the 1,000 square feet, so...
Yes.
What is the length of the extension on the driveway?
Approximately seven feet.
Seven feet. So, now there's a 10-foot separation between the back of the driveway and the east property line, so in the new plan that we send, it'll be three feet. Three feet.
Right, or if you wanted to stick with the 3.3, so it'd be 6.9?
Okay.
Yeah. Any further questions for Mr. Buletza? Anybody in the audience for Mr. Buletza?
Do you have any questions?
Board professionals for Mr. Buletza?
I do not.
No. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Call a next witness.
You may stand down.
Thank you.
Call a next witness, our architect, Pietro Rosato.
Sir, please raise your right hand. solemnly swear affirm testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name for the record and spell it.
Pietro Rosato, P.I.E.T.R.O.R.O.S.A.T.O.
Thank you.
Could we have the benefit of your credentials, Mr. Rosato?
Yes, I'm a licensed architect in New Jersey, New York and Connecticut. My license is in good standing, inactive since 2016, since I first received my license in New Jersey.
Have you appeared before boards in past...
Yes, yes, various boards, yes.
So, we accept your credentials. Thank you, let's move on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, Pietro, you, your firm and yourself personally have prepared the architectural plans ahead of before the board, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay, and in preparing those plans, you also became familiar with not only this lot, but the neighborhood in general?
Yes.
Okay, so you took all that into account in working with the client in terms of designing the particular house?
That's correct.
Okay, and you worked with this client for quite some time to...
Yes.
Get the ultimate design we see tonight?
That is correct, yes.
And there were other options, other designs, larger, whatever, but eventually, this is what was settled on in terms of having, meeting the needs of the applicant to build a family home, but yet have the least impact on surrounding property?
That's correct.
Okay. Why don't you take the board through, you know, and relatively briefly, the architectural elements, starting from either the inside, first floor, second floor, however you want to start? And then we'll discuss the outsiders, the question raised by the chairman about the front porch, we'll address...
I had to appreciate that, thank you, Mr. Hirsch.
Okay. So, this is the, obviously, the proposed home as a rendering, I'm going to go walk you through the plans.
So, before you get to the actual interior?
Yes.
Did you consider your design with a front porch that extended always to the front of, the entire front of the house?
Yes.
To mirror the other houses in the neighborhood, which have porches that extend for the length of the home?
We did, we did. So, we, we considered many designs, and this is sort of what we, you know, what we came up with, with the design. One of the main concerns was the, the lack of basement that, you know, obviously, we couldn't, we couldn't build a basement, and we tried to maximize the square footage as much as possible, and also to create sort of a necessary square footage for, you know, for a family call. That's what we sort of needed, and that's how we came up, you know, what we, we tried to integrate the porch as best as we could within the limits of the lot, and, you know, lot size and so on, so, so that's, we did consider it, but we came up with this...
So, your testimony is the water table is preventing you from building a basement, or you're choosing not to build a, is there a reason you're not building a basement, or is it a choice, just not to build a basement?
So, it was sort of both, a little bit of both, you know, it's a bit of a choice, but also because of the limitations and the water, the high water table that's, you know, within the site.
What is the height of this crawl space?
The crawl space, I believe it's two feet, I don't have the, you know, the structure, but I believe it is two feet. It's the minimum necessary.
It's two feet tall?
Yep.
By how, like, what are the dimensions?
For the footprint of the house.
It's the entire footprint of the house.
The entire footprint of the house, yes, yes.
So, you're obviously going to have some, you know, pipes and so forth from down there. Is this accessible for people to get in to work?
Yes, it will be accessible through a panel from the outside, you see.
So, a little, a little billcook door of some, a little...
None of the door, just an access panel from the, from the side of the house.
I see.
And they'll be crawling, then?
That's all, yeah, yeah, crawling, crawling.
No pun intended.
Very typical crawl spaces.
And I assume this is the reason why the first level, the front porch, is only a couple of steps up, is because you're dealing with, so, right, okay.
Okay, so, I'm going to walk you through the house a little bit.
Now, before you, I just want to mention, we are going to go through, I know you mentioned and clearly correctly, there's a lot of homes with the open front porch across the front of the house.
Consistently, they, they have a, a front porch that extends the length of the house, or the width of the house, right?
We spent a lot of time looking at the neighborhood, looking at the different houses and the designs, which they're going to touch on also.
I think this is more about the bay window.
Yes, it's a definitely...
It's, it's not just the, it's not just the porch, it's also the, it's the, it's the level for the, you know, most of the front porches have steps in Asbury. You walk up a set of stairs and it's, it's higher. So, the whole facade, the front of this house is very unusual for Asbury Park terms, and that's what I think we're all sort of trying to get at. What was your inspiration? I'm trying to figure out how, how this front of the house was designed. Obviously, the, the crawl space is dictating where the porch is, which is much lower than our standard porches in Asbury, and you have half of it built all the way out with a protruding bay window. Bay window. So, it's, it's a very unusual house from the front for Asbury Park, and we're just trying to get to why you came to this.
So, there is another sheet, another exhibit that we sort of put together, showing some of the houses in the surrounding neighborhoods. I get the point, a lot of the houses have porches that extend the length of, you know, the width of the house in the front, but there is some...
Most of the houses?
Most of the houses, yeah.
Mr. Rosato?
And most of the houses, but there's also some houses that have semi-recessed porches, even the, the house next door, to, you know, on the other side of the alley, has, you know, has a recessed porch, and it's not very high either. Has, does have a couple of steps granted, but it's not, you know, extremely high as some of the other houses.
Does that house have a basement, do you?
No, not at all. And we're going to show you some of the, actually, you know what, while we're starting with the porches, some of these, so, this, these are some of the houses, like, along the Comstock Street, and Fifth Avenue, Fourth Avenue. Obviously, a lot of them, many of the houses have the front porch, and it's much higher, but obviously, because of the, the lack of basement, we couldn't raise the house more than we, you know, what we have. So, that sort of triggers the low porch, as mentioned, so, so that's...
Just for the record, isn't that second picture on the top, that's the house next door?
That's the house next door, yes.
I have a question, do you know how far where that, that porch begins on that house? Because I just walked by today and it looked like it's about at least 12 to 15 feet back.
The porch is actually...
No, 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 the body of the house, and then the porch extends out into the front yard setback.
So, the actual house here, the, the second floor of this house aligns with the porch, right? Because it's a recessed porch, and we just measured it, and it's roughly eight feet.
Okay.
Okay. Again, we couldn't measure because it's somebody else's property, but it's roughly eight feet, and we're proposing six, so, from the front. So, the frontage of the house, it's not, you know, substantially different than this house, which is...
I would disagree with you.
I would have to disagree with heartily with that.
It's very, it's very different than that house.
The rendering is a townhouse-like.
In terms of the distance from the, like, wow.
Well, no, because your bay window come, is 3.3 feet from there.
It's 3.8 feet.
I know we have the resolution from the previous application, but do we have any design or render, what, what did we approve design-wise?
It was very different, it was very different.
Would be really good for us to have that as a reference, because it's being, it's being used as leverage, as a template, and be really good for us because...
It was, it was a very modernist, contemporary...
Right, because the applicant was a architect.
Vertical architect.
She was an architect.
Correct.
I remember being a very progressive, almost passive house, right?
It was.
Yes, that's correct.
Very different.
It was a passive house, in fact, at the first meeting, the board kind of rejected the architecture, came back with revisions to meet some of the elements, but there were still three variances related to the metal roof, to the various other elements of the house in terms of the massing and so on, and characteristic that you're speaking of now in the ornamentation. It was approved, but there were several waivers for it. This is a much more traditional, if I can use that term, house than what was proposed and approved previously, if you'll accept my representation on that.
It just resembles for me a townhouse, and not, and not fitting in with the character and the historic nature of what Asbury Park tends to have, as evidenced on your display board.
And you guys have a wonderful example right across the street.
It's beautiful.
Beautiful example, beautiful example, and, and there's many other smaller plots in town that have beautiful examples for you.
Yeah, moving around the neighborhood, I also did see many different varieties of styles of progress, you know, from shingle style to obviously colonial, and, you know, it just, for example, the, the front of the house that we're proposing, it's very similar to someone...
That's the, that's the side of that house.
Yeah, that's the side.
That's the side of that house.
That, that house is on Fifth Avenue.
That has a wraparound porch.
And you're looking at Comstock.
It's a wraparound porch, but it's also semi-recessed.
It's actually the backside of that house.
Yeah, semi-recessed.
We know our neighborhoods.
Yeah.
So, but, you know, it's, I, I think that it's, you know, this is the design that we're proposing, not to say that we cannot go back and change and make some revisions, we just don't want to, we're trying not to lose, you know, the, the square footage necessary for the, for all of this.
I think what they were initially looking at, what Mr. Buletza pointed out, when you see this small lot, behind it is the garage, the other house is going out towards Fifth Avenue, okay, it's over combined 40 feet away, facing a different direction. The house next to it is somewhat similar, as you just explained. So, the house is kind of isolated, it's not like in the middle of a block where, you know, we got front porch, front porch, right, and all of a sudden, we have this. It's kind of isolated in that little corner.
Except for the house across the street.
I think that was part of, we don't have the same impact...
And there's two examples on the block just west of you as well.
The board is struggling to define that.
But please, I just, I just...
Go ahead, Mike.
So, so I feel like I'm sitting here and the board has consensus about how they perceive the character of the neighborhood and the homes and the design of the buildings in the neighborhood and what they express. They agree that this building does not do that. The architect has just said, we can revise this building. Rather than trying to convince the board that they're incorrect in their perceptions, which they seem to be pretty uniform in, why don't we, I mean, I would suggest we agree, and I'm going to say this from an urban design standpoint, you know, porches are the connection between the interior and the, and the social life of the streets, right? We know that as, as planners and urban designers, and maximizing that, not just makes it fit better with the architecture patterns, the architectural patterns of the buildings here, and they're of different eras, but they seem to do the same thing with the porches, that that's also part of the, the community fabric and the social interactions of the neighborhood. and the social interactions of the neighborhood. So I think you'd be well-served to have a porch that went the whole length. I also think that from a standpoint of the location, when you have setbacks that are very close to the street, the way that homes traditionally dealt with that was that they raised up the first floor, so that there was some vertical separation between what happens on the sidewalk and what happens on the interior of a house to give that privacy. So I think that those two elements, plus, I think if you put the rendering back up, what's very stark, when you see the rendering, is that the way that this roof comes out, which is really a substantial deviation from how the neighborhood and the traditional roofs are, I don't see that anywhere. And that's, and that's a stark, stark change. So my suggestion is that, what the board is saying is, wraparound porch, raise it up as much as you can, I mean, if you have a crawl space, there's nothing that ties you to the ground, I mean, you can raise it up a little bit more. And if, for some reason, your stair projects a little bit more, I think that that may be a trade-off to actually accomplish that, to be more consistent with the finished floor elevations of the buildings in the area, so...
Maybe we had something.
That's, that's where I come from.
The second floor balcony is also visually concerning for me, and you can regain some of your lost square footage from the first floor by having a complete second floor and not having a second floor balcony.
Similar to the house next door.
Yes.
Yes. I wasn't suggesting the board was incorrect, I was pointing out that...
We have a lot of houses on these sides of town.
We never do. I was just pointing out some unique factors of this location.
We have a lot of houses on lots of sides.
And we know the neighborhoods very well.
And they're all cottages. You have cottage-sized lots.
Yeah.
It should read like, more like a cottage.
Yes.
Because that's what's on these lots all throughout town, we have lots of lots these sizes.
And in saying what I said, I do want to say that the arrangement, the way this building has been situated on the property, is exactly the right way to do it, right? When you, when you consider the proximity of the adjacent home that has their patio on the back where your driveway is, by pushing the building back, so you're not looking down on that, by pushing the building back towards where the garage is here, I think it's the appropriate relationships on the site to the adjacent homes.
All right, so we've had discussions about other alternatives, obviously, before we ever came here, you know, what's possible, what isn't, I mean, I'm not a design architect, but we understand the issues that arise, we understand the reports, you know, and the nature of the front porch, and it was discussed about how we make up square footage in the house, if we did that, so on and so forth. So it's not like the applicant hadn't any thoughts about this. They weren't sure exactly where the board would be because of, again, where this is sort of sitting in its own little corner of the world, so to speak. But we hear what the board's saying, and if that's, you know, a major concern, the front porch, you know, extending on the front of the house, which would obviously requires various internal changes to the house, we have to take that under advisement, you know, and do work what we can with the additional floor plan. You're mentioning getting rid of the balcony, pushing the second floor out for square footage, and there's got some trade-offs, you follow me, to try to find a way to get the additional square footage to make this a good family home with enough room and yet meet some of these architectural concerns with the character, if you will, you know, of the neighborhood. So I think that's what we'll have to do, is take a look at that, I know there's been some discussions, you know, with the owner, and you'll have to work out wherever you think you can make, you know, the adjustments internally to adjust, you know, where the porch, you know, the porches want that, about raising it, that's more of an engineering question, I don't know what they can and can't do with that. That's up to the engineer, the architect, if that can be done, so be it, you know, I'm just not sure with the crawl space, but that's something we'll talk about also. All right, so, I mean, obviously, that's what we need to address, I mean, the architect is going to show other things in the neighborhood, the floor plan, and we had our planner, but there's no point, I think, in doing that at this point until we come back and ask him for a day and have the architect, the owner, have a chance, and the engineer, maybe even some input about in terms of raising and, you know, foundation, et cetera, to present that to the board, and then we can conclude with our other testimony.
We appreciate that, Mr. Hirsch, yes. I think that's the best course of action right now, is to make some new decisions about the design of the house and then come back.
Yeah, yeah, it's, as I said, it is different than what was approved. We thought we were moving closer to what the, you know, the Asbury's liked, the town was liked, but not close enough, so we will continue to work on it.
So we have two meetings left this year, November 12th and December...
So November 12th, we've missed the deadline already.
Right, so it's going to be either December or into...
So it's December 10th, everything would be due by the 15th of November, which is...
December 10th.
So they would need to wait until November, what should be fine?
November 15th.
We would need all the changes sent to the planner and engineer by November 15th.
So that would, or the next meeting would be the January 28th meeting.
All right.
Tom, if you don't mind.
Is that agreeable?
Yes.
What may I...
January, have any issues about December?
I can, I can send some of the links, may I? January 28th? January 28th.
So it's January 28th is the next meeting then?
I can send them.
All right.
Tom, if you don't mind, since you're going to be making some changes...
I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry.
Since you're going to be making changes to these plans, how about these changes that were recommended with regard to the driveway?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Have those accomplished as well?
Pushing the driveway back further, yeah.
So there wouldn't be any...
And the gate, yeah.
So there wouldn't be any need for that as condition.
Sure, we have the time down, it won't be a resolution compliance issue, we would just submit it with revised plan, with two IAs.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to carry...
Did you say January or December?
December.
I guess the December date, I think they want to move it.
The December date?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to carry 1206 Comstock to December 8th, 2024, without further notice.
I'd like to add to...
December 10th.
December 10th.
December 10th, right.
I'd like to add to that, please.
Yeah.
Mr. Hirsch, you waive any time constraints within which we have to act under the MLUR?
Yes, if my client waives a timeframe of this, well, we, time in which the board must act.
Okay.
Jack, no further notice?
No further notices required. So anybody that's here on this, know that on December 10th, is that the correct date?
December 10th.
At 7:00 PM, we're going to reconvene on this application, so there won't be any new notices sent or published.
Thank you for your input, for your time.
Let's have a vote.
I'll need a vote.
Do you need a motion? That was like, second, John, seconded, how about a vote?
November 15th.
November 15th.
Wendy Glassman. Yes. Daniel Harris.
Yes.
Russell Lewis.
Yes.
Jill Potter.
Yes.
Tim Slick.
Yes.
Vice Chair Scully.
Yes.
And Chairman Avaloni.
Yes.
And I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Yeah.
One question?
I think about everything.
Yeah, you did, you called it. Dan, if you...
Yes, you can watch the video.
Yeah, if he watches the video, he can vote.
That's cool.
So then, I will send that, and then that seconded, second, and in all favor.
Aye.
Good night.